Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Whaley School Committee meeting. The first order of business is to review and approve the minutes.
So Moon, from April 5th?
All in favor?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is Patty.
So I did email you your financial report, and you have nine warrants to sign tonight for forty thousand, eight oh two, and twenty-three cents. And that's all I have to report. Next, well, actually, I don't know if you want to do this now or when we get to the, it's not on, it didn't, I don't know why it's not on the agenda, but we presented in April to you the cafeteria team leader position with the salary scale, and we said we would bring it to vote. I don't know why it didn't get on the agenda. So I can hand these out, and we could, if you want to vote them tonight, we could, or you can postpone it to June. That's up to you, but I'll hand them out.
This is the one at the joint meeting?
Yes, that, Mary.
Do you want one?
I pretty much know it, but thank you for that.
And attached to it would be, is the salary scale.
I saw it. It was on our frontiers agenda, so.
These are the same for all the schools, right?
Yes, this would be the same for all the schools.
Are you okay voting tonight?
If it's not on the agenda.
Shouldn't vote it?
You shouldn't vote it.
Okay, so I guess we'll table it for.
Next meeting.
Okay, so it's been handed out, so I'll send Donna an email right now to tell her that it's got to be on for a vote.
Thank you.
Okay. So nothing on the financials to highlight?
I just mean that, I just, I'm just, I may let you know in the email that we're over in our school committee budget.
Right.
So we're gonna, I'm just watching it with Pete to make sure that, you know, we have an offset.
Okay.
And in next month's report, we'll be able, we'll be able to tell you whether or not we have any money to do any summer projects. So we'll have a more detailed analysis at that point.
Okay.
One of the things I have been doing with the other schools, because sometimes we load up Mr. Lesko with all these projects, is just taking the money from, using the payroll from school choice and putting it on the budget, so then the money is in school choice so that we can do the project during the year if we don't have time. Because if we encumber it, then Bob's gonna get all that work done by August, and sometimes it's becoming really difficult for him to do that.
Yeah.
So if we take the salaries in school choice and put them in here, then we have the money in school choice when Bob has the time to do the project and you approve the project. So if you'd like me to do that, I can do that.
So that's not encumbering the money? That's moving?
It'd be switching funding sources, yes.
Switching funding sources.
So that we would zero down our general budget, our town budget.
Didn't we do, like, the extra money last year? Didn't we do a couple classrooms with?
We did, and we also did the roof of the shed or garage, and there was one other project we did.
Actually, the first time I looked, I saw it tonight. I said, looks really, instead of things growing on our doors. It looks pretty good.
And then there was the floors.
We did a couple floors, yeah.
Well, I know that we're still going to get air conditioning in the closet.
That's coming, yes.
That's coming. And we did get the clocks done and the phones.
I don't know about that.
Well, we have a list of the capital projects, which is great. So I think we'll want to reference that next meeting to think about what other projects might get done on this thing.
Okay, so I'll just put that down. So we'll be prepared. Thank you.
So in the second email, so the questions, that's all I have? That's all you have? Okay. So, public comment? Do we have anyone in the public that would like to make a comment tonight? Okay, great. Thank you for coming.
Would you like to join us?
Yeah, you can come sit at the table with us if you'd like.
And you can be on TV. Kathy, are you sure?
She's my speaker.
It's fine.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Julie Sibley. I work here in the Whaley Cafeteria. I'm a part-time assistant. I came to actually address the school committee meeting about trying to help us get hours back that we lost. We did actually have a meeting with Dr. Carey and Patty today and our boss, Mary DeLusa. And so we are working on trying to get some hours back. I did gain an hour back, which is helpful. So I appreciate Patty and Dr. Carey and Mary, DeLusa, our boss, for trying to assist us and talking to us today about it. Just to quickly touch base, for Kathy and I, we love, sorry, we love working here. And we do it for the students. But losing the hours to me was really hard. I have family to support. Sorry. Hours have always been an issue, which I know I talked to Patty and Dr. Carey and Mary about. One thirty time for, to have us both scheduled to just doesn't work. We're never able to get out at one thirty. I know we're gonna work with Mary to try to figure out what we're doing differently compared to some other schools and see where we can try to adjust a little bit and try to help that situation. So hopefully, we can maybe work some hours or try to figure out that situation and what we're doing that we could probably speed up the situation a little bit or help us focus on where we could save some hours or whatever. Let's see. I'm just quickly looking at my notes, so I apologize. One of the things is, I know with Kathy, I'm coming in and there's only ten minutes before we start serving. So there's times that Kathy's not even getting a break. She's working up until I come in the door and we start serving. So there's time that she's not even sitting down or being able to leave the kitchen. It depends on the meal.
What time does she come in?
She comes in at six, seven o'clock. So she's some, it depends on the meal and what she's prepping. There's some days, as I said, that she's not even out of the kitchen to even use the restroom. So, and so from the time I come in, I collect the payments. I go to the register. I take some quick temperatures. And I'm, and then we start serving. So I'm doing the register. I go straight to the dish room. I do the dish room. And then we pretty much, depending on the meal or what we're doing, we pretty much get that done. The next group of kids come in. I do the register. I'm back to the dish room. And I do that until one forty-five or two o'clock, depending on the day, depending on how much cleanup there is and how much, you know, what the meal is. And then I'm out the door because I go to my second job and I drive bus. So I'm out the door between one forty-five and two o'clock. And that just seems to be the average.
Julie, what time do you come in?
I come in, so I was coming in at eleven-thirty. We just changed it. They just gave me an hour back, starting today. So now I'm gonna come in at ten forty-five and I'm gonna work until one forty-five. So hopefully, I'll be getting out a little bit more on time to what I'm working. As I said, Kathy and I just. Right, yes. And so Kathy will be able to have a little bit of a chance to go away. And I can help her a little bit more. I can take a little bit of the load off of her. And I've said it since the beginning of the school year, with only giving me ten minutes, I'm not helping her anymore. I'm not, she's doing this all on her own. She's gonna get burnt out. I can't survive on two hours a day. I actually thank goodness that my other boss was able to give me more hours driving bus to make up the difference.
So yours is two hours a day?
I was two hours a day. Now I just got back another hour. So that's three hours a day.
And what were you before the changes?
So before the changes, depending on the day, I was seventeen hours a week. And so depending on the day, I was either four hours or like three and a half hours. It depended on the day. And I know that when we started at the beginning of the year, because Debbie did our timesheets, it was never documented that we worked past one thirty. And so unfortunately, that hindered us when we made these changes for the beginning of the school year. Because it was never documented that we worked past one thirty. So Kathy and I donated tons of hours and tons of.
So you weren't paid for the time that you were working at?
Correct. Neither one of us were paid for those four years that we, and we just basically donated our time to make sure our kitchen is clean. We take pride in our kitchen. I can't walk away from a dirty dish room and leave it for Kathy to walk into the next day. It's just, and that's just gonna put her behind. That's not fair to do. So we always stayed. We always donated our time. We stayed. As I said, Debbie did the payroll, so, and she always told us we were not allowed to work, we weren't allowed to document that time. She said, you get paid until one thirty, that's it. If we had known that we could put that down or we should be documenting that time, we would've. But we just, we didn't. So we both, we've both lost money in the last, in four years. And I figured it out. And it's a pretty big chunk of change that I've, that I've lost, that I worked for free. And this year, the schedule, the way that lunches in recess worked, the kids were getting out at, today, this year, they're getting out of the cafeteria. Lunches are supposed to be done about twelve fifty. So that gives us a little more time. Now they're pushing it back next year that the lunches will be done at one. The last lunch will be done at one. So that gives us a half an hour to clean up. I do know that we talked to Mary DeLusa, and she said she will speak to Mr. Kristofouli again about trying to see if we can shift that time because a half an hour isn't enough time. And this is from the teachers. They all wrote up a letter in support of trying to support us, which we appreciate. Some of the teachers aren't here. We appreciate them supporting us and backing us and trying to get our hours back. So we're, as I said, we love the school. We do it for the children. And we just, we need to take into consideration, we hope that we can get the hours back. And I appreciate the hour that they gave me back. That will help. And hopefully, we can figure that out. But unfortunately, I have a family, you know, I have to support as well. And I know Kathy did not get any hours back.
How many did you lose, Kathy?
I lost a half hour a day. But that's not the point. I could use it at the end of the day, at least fifteen more minutes for the paperwork. But, say no, no. Gotta work just like the other schools. They're all getting out at one thirty.
So we just, you know, we appreciate you guys listening to us and trying to help us try to fix this situation. You know, as I said, we do this for the students. And we love the students. We love the staff. We love the school. But, you know, I have a family to support too, so.
I know the kids love you guys too.
Yeah, I hear it.
And we can't really get into a discussion now because it's public comment, but we really appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts. And I do want to echo Maureen's comments about how wonderful you guys are in the cafeteria. We really value you.
If I could just piggyback on that. We're here in support of Kathy Julie. And we're happy to have signed that letter. We wholeheartedly believe in everything that's on there. I don't honestly know how they do what they do and the amount of time they have. And I just wonder when the hours got cut, if the fact that we now have full-day preschool and this new card system, if those were factored into that because they are time-consuming.
The new what?
The new card system in terms of, you know, swiping the cards and all that. Because I know that does take.
They're supposed to save time.
They what?
They're supposed to save time.
Yeah. Well, I can't say that.
Handing them out, all that stuff.
But the other thing is, you know, I, you can't put a price on good customer service. And these two ladies are top-notch. The children know they care.
They go out of their way to make the kindergarteners and everybody feel welcome. And they don't, they make them feel safe and not rushed. And kindergarteners don't always do things quickly. And they're doing preschool now.
Yeah.
And then the gluten-free kids, I gotta take care of them too. And that's like three to four kids. Doesn't seem like, well, that's it. But you gotta be safe and all that stuff with it.
So it's really helpful to get the reality of the, these are essentially budget issues that, you know, we're dealing with. And so this is really helpful for us to understand what the trade-offs are with the budget. And the cafeteria is a tricky spot for the budget. So we'll do our best to try and make it all work.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other comment? Okay. So we'll move on to new business.
So Patty will talk about the discussion of increasing the school lunch.
Okay, so we have a proposal to raise the price of the school lunch in September from two eighty-five to two ninety-five. We have been waiting for the documentation from DESI, their guidance on this. But they have verbally told us that, starting in September, we'll receive two dollars and ninety-two cents for a free lunch. We can't charge lower than what they're giving us for the free lunch. Last year, we were at two, they were giving us two eighty-six and we were at two eighty-five. So on the matrix, we were okay because we were just a penny off. This is gonna be a larger, we're not gonna be okay. So we're gonna have to push it up to two ninety-five.
I got a question. What's the other three elementary schools charting the same amount?
Everybody's at the same except for the high school.
And, and that's going from three to three-ten at the high school?
Right. And they have not had an increase since I've been here.
And I guess where I'm getting at is, why can't we just be all the same, all five schools? Just make it, either make it.
Because the portion sizes are larger at the high school. So it costs more to produce a high school, middle school lunch.
Thanks. I knew it had to be a simple answer. I'm just saying, why can't we just charge the same in all five schools?
Because it's, the lunch is different.
Bigger boys, bigger girls, yeah, bigger portions.
And I don't know if this is possible, but would, could we raise it to three in an effort to try and cover more costs? Or, and also to make it a little easier on family, parents?
Well, see, making another nickel, I guess I, you can make it whatever you want. You can. We were just, we're going for the two ninety-five to be ten cents over what we'd be getting, you know, at least nine cents. That would be a buffer that would hopefully buy us two years having to raise it again. But I mean, if you, did Deerfield vote the two ninety-five the other night?
Two ninety-five.
But I mean, you could go, that's up to you guys. You could go to three. I mean, it's at your discretion, you know.
But I would recommend not because.
We want to keep everybody in the same.
We're in the near bubble.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to increase the school lunch from two eighty-five to two ninety-five in school year nineteen.
A second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have the salary sheet?
I do.
So the other item is the salary.
Can we vote on this in June, right?
Thank you. These are the salary recommendations for the non-union employees. It's a two percent raise that mirrors the increase that the CBA for the teaching and IA staff received. It's six percent over three years, the same as the teaching and the IA.
Does everybody get the same raise? Or is there any discretion in how different people get?
There's one little change. Well, the, with the adoption of this cafeteria team leader position, the person that's in the position here would not get a raise because she's already at the top of the scale. So she would remain the same. So that's the one difference on the Whaley page. And we looked at this with other school districts in our area. And that, that had to be the top step.
So if you're at the top step, you don't get the.
Well, normally, you would. But because we were saying we were gonna make this retro back to January and she's already there, and then they would, we wouldn't ask for a recommendation in June because we were gonna make it retro back to January.
She still gets her two percent.
No, she doesn't.
Oh, she doesn't?
She'd be frozen.
Okay.
But what happens next year?
She'd get whatever percentage. We would then.
Because she's at the amount that the group is getting?
That we had to set the top step at.
So is there any way to give her some sort of other compensation?
Well, she, I believe she's been here long enough to get her longevity bonus.
And we haven't passed, did we pass that?
You don't have to. That's, that's in their, it's in the policy.
We have talked about adding more to it, but they do have a longevity as it is. And we have wanted to extend it for, for you, so we're here like forty years. But she wouldn't qualify.
Qualify for that? But would she qualify for a bonus?
I think she does get it.
So she doesn't qualify for the change? Because she qualifies for the.
Right.
So she would get some sort of extra?
We had to, she was the highest person and we couldn't go any, when we looked, when we looked at every other school, no one's paying their head, their head people that amount an hour. And we had seen that written in the report we had done that we were, our salaries were pretty generous compared to the others in our area for our cafeteria staff. Which is one of the reasons that led to the reduction in hours.
Okay. But then the idea is that everybody else gets the same?
Everyone gets two percent.
So it's not like a performance-based raise or anything? It's just flat? What did they get last year?
Two.
So it's two, two and two. And the CBA for the teachers and the IAs were one, two and a half, two and a half. So it balances out. It's essentially a cola for two percent.
And this is factored into our budget for next year?
Oh, yeah, she does that.
Okay. Okay. So we don't need to really do anything now? This is just.
Next month.
Previewing it for us?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? And is that the same for, that's the same for the staff? Not in, at the school?
It is for everyone. And every non-union employee. So you'll see a list of, when you look over on the second page, you'll see a list of central office people. And they get two percent as well. There's one person that is getting a little bump, and that is an IT specialist. And the reason is because he is essentially, for the work that he does, he was hired at a lower rate. And so we bumped him up to reflect his position as an IT specialist. He's very, very good.
So it's more of a promotion in terms of he is.
Or a correction.
A correction.
Equity.
And then the only other difference is we're working with Janet Soretico for the out-of-school time program. Because when, there was a lot of confusion. If you remember, last year, we gave them a one percent increase because everybody was everywhere. So we thought we had a step schedule set. And now, if we give them a two percent, Janet can't, is saying that she can't afford a two percent raise and a step. So now we're going back to the drawing board again for out-of-school time to set up to say, maybe you're on step one for years one, two, and three, and then you step four, five, and six to the next step. Because she says if we give them two percent plus the step, she's gonna be paying out more than she will be bringing in. So we're working on reworking that.
But that doesn't really hit our budget?
No. It's a self-funded budget, right.
Budget, okay. Okay. So the policies?
So these policies, we've worked on a policy committee. And so we're just listing them for you. And you have a list of each one. And you'll see if it's added. It's added in red. And it could be a very minor addition, such as adding the words pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions. If we're taking something out, you'll see that we, it's strike out. So you'll see here handicap. We struck handicap out and put disability. There's two, two policies that I need to go back to the committee to talk about. And one is school choice. I just need to take out a qualifier of two, and you'll see it, of two, two lotteries. We're going to do, we're going to do one. And the other piece was in the network, social network use, IT use. And it states that the principal will be checking to see if teachers are going, are publishing on sites that are not okay. And we don't have any way of doing that. We wouldn't do it anyway. So I, I'm striking that out. So I need to either get the committee together for, real quick, but it would be great if we could do it and get that.
We spent a lot of Tuesday nights doing this. Lots.
There is a lot of them, but they're simple. Most of them are very simple.
So the ones that are on the agenda were from Donna's first email.[1544.56]
Yeah.
Then there were two more emails?
Mm-hmm, and those are the ones that we did after the first email?
So we're not gonna discuss those until next month?
Those will, um, those are yours as well for first read. They go with this pile, and so you vote on them all in June.
Okay. The ones that are listed, plus the ones...
Plus, yeah.
The two that...
The ones that were added today, I think they were added today.
Yeah, there was something else today, but I'm talking about the other day.
Yes.
Yeah, there were two emails I wrote.
So those will go on, and, and once you look at them and really look at them, you'll see it, it's, she's made it pretty crystal clear what exactly we're doing, and they're just, for the, um, liability of the district and to do, to do the right thing and change, uh, to upkeep with the laws, verbiage has changed and different pieces, but you'll see where we strike out the words or we add the words, and it's pretty simple. The only two, again, that, um, we may or may not vote on, I'd like to bring them forward to the next meeting, um, I'd like to bring them forward and have the, the people vote, or the school committees vote with striking out those words.
Okay.
So...
So we'll be voting on all the policies next meeting?
Next meeting.
Essentially, okay.
Thank you so much.
Is this the end of the policy work?
That's it.
Has the committee?
That is it.
Finished?
Yeah.
Thank you to the committee for doing all this work.
They worked really hard. Had I known, I probably would've started sooner, but there were a lot of questions and then a lot of holdovers. I needed to get information, I needed to come back, and then we needed to relook at that. But it worked out really well.
So if we have questions or comments, how do we...
You could send them to me alone, because we don't want to work in, um, open meeting, we don't wanna violate that, and then that discussion would come up when we decide to vote.
Oh, I was talking about the policies.
Right. And, and then that discussion would come up when we meet, um, next month to discuss the policies. Maureen had a question, and this is, you know, this is the answer.
But we need to either vote on, we have to vote on them next time, so there isn't really opportunity to discuss them, right?
Well, if you don't wanna vote on them, you don't have to.
If there's a particular one you, that we need to question more so, even though four of the schools are voting on it, we can still bring it up.
There was a, um, a representative from each school committee on this committee that we worked on. So essentially, I think you could even ask Bob, if you have a question about one, you could ask Bob, and, but I don't think you'll have a question, I, I think they're really, um...
I always have questions.
But there's difference in questions to clarify and questions to make changes.
Right, right.
Right, so you might have a lot of questions that you just need to understand what...
Probably majority of them are, would be that.
And the hope is that the committees were able to rework the policies in a way that worked for everybody, but if there is an issue you wanna bring up...
They're all recommended, we didn't come up with, we, these aren't original thoughts.
No, I know, I just...
They're invented by the association's school committees.
Some of them are, some of them are brand-new from MASCE, and some of them, we had, we had our language, and then they had theirs, and we looked at them, and the only thing they did, they added number six to our list over here, and it was a lot, just extra language for the times, even though we approved them, some of these only two years ago. Things have changed in two years and stuff, so...
Well, it's good for us all to be very aware of these policies.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think we should ask questions if we have them, and if something comes up, then we can revisit it at the next meeting.
Just, they used to do stuff like this in the job, so I...
Ah, you have a calling. I see who's gonna be on the policy committee next. Um, okay, so we voted for the lunch. Pete is usually the one to do the capital project, so he's not here to update us, but if that, you're saying that that cabinet is... That shouldn't be, I wanna know about that, we'll find out, I guess.
Um, I just want to thank the town and the town meeting for approving our budget one more time and for supporting everything that goes on here at Whately Elementary, and also wanted to appreciate the teachers for the week, because we should appreciate them all year, but, um, they do a great job.
It's teacher appreciation.
It is teacher appreciation week here at Whately Elementary, so I just wanna publicly do that. Um, and I think that's all I had.
I don't have any, cooperative have anything?
Do you have any?
No, we didn't have a meeting, I think there's one later this month. Right now, they're doing the evaluation of the director. I haven't done that yet, it's a little daunting.
Pete's not here?
Pete's not here, um, so we'll get an update from him hopefully next meeting, but I also just wanted to share that I'm gonna ask him to give us an update on early release for next meeting, for next year. I'm curious, we've been talking to a lot of parents, we're eager to have sort of more of a plan as to what the early release activities are gonna be for the children when they stay at the school after, and try and understand that more ahead of time.
Yeah, there were programs that they would sign up for, and it'd be for so many weeks, but that seems to stopped, um, since the holiday, since like the Christmas holidays, I don't think they've had anything. So just to see what the plan is for next year.
We wanted to preempt it for next year and try and kinda get that organized ahead of time, so we can, people, families can know what's going on, and teachers and everybody. Okay, and then...
You can turn it?
Yeah, so that leaves me, and a couple of things. The first thing, um, I, I would like to tender my resignation, and I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity and, um, for welcoming me into the community as of June thirtieth.
So we need to make a vote as a committee?
I may do, accept her resignation from June thirtieth of this year.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Have fun with your endeavors.
Sorry, thank you for all you've done for the school.
Okay, uh, so also too, in our work with the policy committee, the policy committee asked that I kind of do an illustration or a chart of all the special ed programs, the, uh, specialized programs, not really special ed, but specialized programs that we have within the district. And so this is the, uh, what we came up with, what, this is what we offer, these are our different schools. The only school that really doesn't have, um, is Whately, and, um, but you can see where the, the school is, what the program's called, and what the demographic is, and then the services they provide. It's kind of abstract, if you don't know, we talk about this program or that program or where we're putting, you know, students are being, um, transferred to, or, for instance, Whately has a couple of students that are tuitioned into, uh, another school and another program, and so this will give you as a resource, this will give you the information about where they're going and why.
Yeah, this is something we talked about a little bit during the policy committee. I had no idea where...
That's a good idea, it's helpful.
That, you know, the wings program, I knew it was in Conway, but what was in Tailed and Deerfield and, and Sunderland, and, of course, that frontier, they have many, many things, up to twenty-two years old for some of these people.
In, in the parentheses are the number of students that are served in those programs. This was also, um, Karen Ferrandino, the special ed director, and Kim McCarthy, the early childhood, uh, director coordinator, worked with me on that, so that I had there in progress. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. So is that it for your report?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, so the next thing is, we're gonna go into executive session, which we will...
Ms. General Ross, C. thirty-eight, ask for one A. one to discuss complaints or charge against a public employee.
Okay, but the, the other members aren't here that were gonna participate, so I think we'll, those of us that are gonna participate can wait, but everybody else can leave, and we'll just adjourn. The only reason we'll come back is to adjourn the meeting.